All right, let's rock and roll. Let's do this real quick. Okay. Madam City Manager, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll, I'm sorry.
Certainly. That's what we're used to. Certainly. Good evening, Mr. Rickaman.
Here.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Present.
Mr. Bedura.
Here.
Mr. Devon. Mr. Davis.
Here.
Mayor Benjamin.
Present. Dr. Haas, I think you have a bunch of young people here, you think they'd be interested in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Can y'all come stand up here and maybe lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Come on, come on, come on, come on, come on, come on, come on. Come on. This is not the last time we're gonna see them today either, but I think it's too much of an opportunity to miss. Dr. Haas' class from the...
(Singing) To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job. Good to McDowell. Would you please?
Let us bow our heads. Lord, for the season of Advent, and as we approach the birth of Him who saves and delivers, we thank You for this day and for all that You've done for us. Bless us individually and collectively. Allow us to sense and feel Your presence in this chamber tonight. We ask it. Claim it in Your name, amen.
Amen.
Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
The second.
Second.
Discussion. With the previous question, clerk call the roll.
Mr. Rickaman.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Mr. Bedura.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin.
Aye. Madam City Manager?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, at this time we would ask for any public input related to the items on the agenda as outlined. Seeing none, we would ask council to approve consent agenda items eight through seventeen.
A motion?
Second.
Second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, to move the previous question, the clerk will call the roll.
Mr. Rickaman.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Mr. Bedura.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin.
Aye.
Moving into a period of presentations, our first is "The Support for the Representation of Women in Downtown Street Names, Markers, and Memorials Presented by Dr. Chris Haas, Center for Inquiry."
All right, Dr. Haas. So y'all have already met some of our very special guests here tonight, some of whom in a couple hours should be getting perishedly close to bedtime. So, let's use our time effectively.
They all have papers to write.
And I'll say this, this is a point of personal privilege, I was invited, I guess it was last year. Was it last year? Gosh, it's been, it's been, just a, to see an issue that obviously we've been talking about with some other leadership groups here throughout the city, and to be presented to and discussed with a bunch of children. Probably the most compelling presentation I've heard, teased them earlier and told them, my daughters often tell me the future is female, and I will say that the future is pretty male, too. But, the, the clear acknowledgement that, as we look back on history, we have never given the women in this country, maybe this world, their due in helping build this incredible country we live in for sure, in this city and the state. So, this presentation is so important, thank y'all for being here this evening. Please.
Hi, my name is Maya Charlie Segal. There's something I want to discuss that's been weighing heavily on my mind. Downtown Columbia has only one street named after a woman. It's Lady Street. Lady Street is named after Martha Washington, but there are many others named after men. I think this is unfair because women deserve to be represented for what they've done as well. Did you know that about fifty percent of the people who live in Columbia are female, but only four percent of the street names and landmarks named after people are named for women? That means the other ninety-six percent are named after men. Why is this, or better yet, what are we prepared to do it about? Tonight, a few of my classmates and I are going to help you learn about just a few women who should have their names considered. There are many others, of course. Our hope is that you will consider this when naming new streets or creating new landmarks.
Hi, I'm Raleigh. Okay, so now we're gonna share some women and some of the things they've done. One of them is Matilda Arabella Evans. Matilda Arabella Evans graduated from the Women's Medical College of Pennsylvania in eighteen ninety-seven. She was the first African-American woman licensed to practice medicine in South Carolina. She also founded the Columbia Clinic Association, which provided health services and health education to families. She established the Negro, which means black, Health Association of South Carolina, to educate families throughout the state on popular healthcare procedures. She treated both and white, both white and black patients, and was in great demand. That means people really liked her. Dr. Evans was elected President of the Palmetto State Medical Society, Society, and Vice President of the National Medical Association in World War I, and was appointed to the Volunteer Medical Service Corps. Namrata Haley, also known as Nikki Haley, is an American diplomat, businesswoman, author, and politician who served as United States Ambassador to the United Nations from January two thousand seventeen to December two thousand eighteen. Nikki Haley served in South Carolina as a state representative from two thousand five to two thousand eleven, and as governor from two thousand eleven to two thousand seventeen. She's the first woman to be governor in South Carolina, and the second Indian-American governor in the United States.
Hi, I'm Tiffany, I'm gonna be sharing some women I think that should be have names, street names named after them. Marion Wright Edelman was, was the first black woman to, to...
Believe me, dear, you're doing better than most adults who come in here, you're doing just fine.
Hi, my name is Kirsten. I'm gonna be talking about why this is important to us. It's, this is important because women should be recognized for the important things they've done, just as much as men are. It's not just street signs and landmarks either. In our classroom, we looked at the Social Studies History book that teaches us about South Carolina history. Guess what we found? We found that mostly only white men get recognized for what they've done. Women and people of color are hardly in there. And when they are in there, it's mostly at the end of the chapter in, on one page. What message does that send? I'll tell you. It says that women and people of color are mostly not cared about as much as white men are. Tiffany and Raleigh shared about four important women and some of the great things they've done. But there are hundreds of others more. Our city needs to work harder to recognize the efforts and accomplishments of everyone. No matter their color or gender, we should do better.
Well, I will say, Dr. Haas, we've had some wonderful discussions at the city, among staff, among some of our community leaders, that your students have served as kind of the impetus of. And I expect that in the not-too-distant future, we'll have some major announcements because of it. So, we'll make sure that as things continue to move forward, that you're all fully looped in and will participate. Did you have some more? Come on, come on, the microphone's still yours. Is, is, little dear, is she done, she doesn't wanna come back up? Are you sure? Cause, all right, I know, I promised you that Dr. Marion Wright Edelman would be very proud of you right now. Very, just like we are. Just like we are.
Sir, I just wanted to point out real quick that to learn, and those are just four women, we learned about dozens and dozens and dozens of women who deserve recognition as well. We had to really go out of our way to learn those histories because they aren't readily available to us. Something we've done more recently is look at our history book that the state of South Carolina gives us to teach third grade history, South Carolina history. And there's a lack of women, there's a lack of people of color, there's a lack of representation across many social groups. And we're proud of the efforts that the city of Columbia has taken to start addressing this. But we also know that it's not nearly far enough, and sometimes we can feel good about making small movement when what we know that we ultimately need is larger movement. So we just wanted to thank you all for taking the time to have us here to speak today.
Well, thank you. And some of you may know that obviously I work supporting financially the workers, the city of women work, and also our works around Columbia SC sixty-three. If you walk Main Street and look at the history of the civil rights movement in this state, and the work of women like Sarah Mae Fleming that no one really knows the story of, who was Rosa Parks before Rosa Parks was Rosa Parks. That, just as these fantastic young people have illuminated for us tonight, we've had some amazing, amazing women help to build this city from the very birth of the city in seventeen eighty-six. And we look forward to taking on the challenge of these young people and making the overall goal of inclusion right for all of us prospectively. So, we look forward to having some more discussions about that. And I think, again, I think we'll have some pretty cool announcements really soon.
Thank you so much.
All right, so, this won't be a long meeting tonight, but we will not be offended if you go home, okay? So, I don't have small children anymore, but I know it's not a small task to get even small children down. So, you all keep, keep dreaming really big dreams, keep working hard, keeping amazing young people. You're gonna have to kind of save the world from us, you know that, right? All the things that we got wrong, you got to go back and fix somewhere down the road, and hopefully you won't break too many things too often. But we believe in you, we love you, and believe me, we're all working together to try and make sure that this city is someplace you can be very proud of when you grow up and you can make your own decisions about where you wanna live. We wanna make sure that your hometown is an option for you. But we expect you to go out and do some amazing things in life, all right? All right, God bless y'all, y'all take care, all right? All right.
Item nineteen, our next presentation is "The Hunger Project" by Dr. Tamara L. Burke, Director, and Ms. Lauren Fleming, MA, Program Manager, the Center for Leadership and Social Change.
Hello.
Hey.
Hi.
How are you?
Fine. How are y'all?
We're back, I feel like we should be like, "We're back." But we're here, we thought we would come back and kind of close the loop on a project we spoke with you about several months ago that is really something that I think Columbia has to celebrate. I wanted to first say I'm sad that Dr. Chris Haas left because I was gonna tell him that as the Director of the Center for Leadership and Social Change, number one, I want all those girls to come visit Columbia College soon. And second, I would love to do a partnership with them and work with them on doing this, our part for the city, to get more streets named after women. So I just thought that was a really phenomenal thing, and I'm sorry he's not here to hear, but I just threw my card at him and said, "Call me." Anyway, so we are here to tell you a little bit about our Hunger Project. We are the ones that stashed those purple t-shirts on the back of your, and we watched every one of you what you did when you saw them, so we were, we were watching you. A few months ago, we came here, we talked about the fact we had a really crazy idea of packaging thirty thousand meals for our family in two nine two oh three. We are two nine, two nine two oh three warriors. We worked carefully with Councilman Davis and, and love what we do, how we do with those particular groups. We did end up getting over a hundred donors. The donations ranged in, from five dollars to twenty-five hundred dollars. We in fact did make all the money, or raise, we didn't make, we raised the money, boy, that is hard work. I'm never gonna be a fundraiser, but we did it, it took, it was our whole summer. And we also made sure that anything we needed connected to the project, like the t-shirts that we gave you, that we had local youth to do them. So we found two young men who are just starting out a t-shirt business, so we were very conscious in our grassroots initiatives in this. So, the bottom line is, and we're gonna show you a brief video. In August, the first weekend opening at Columbia College, we had over three hundred volunteers come to our campus, to our gymnasium. They were first-year students, fresh, literally, just said goodbye to their parents, faculty, staff, trustees, and over, representatives from over thirty different community organizations in Columbia. So it was a wonderful event, and Lauren's gonna tell you a little bit about the math.
So, yeah, so we actually did what we thought we were gonna do when we came and spoke to you a couple months ago. I think we surprised ourselves and a few other people as well. But at the end of August twenty-fourth, we had packaged thirty thousand two hundred and thirty meals, some of which were, we bookmarked for local grassroots initiatives in two nine two oh three, after-school programs, churches, nonprofits. And the rest all went into Richland One with the social work program. And so, social workers, your Richland One social workers, got to take these with them at the beginning of the school year with their home visits to give to the families and introduce themselves, along with a recipe card made by a local chef in two nine two oh three to help people, families feel prepared to make the nutritious meal that they were provided. And so we really just wanted to say thank you for your support. We wanted to close the loop since you were some of the first people we spoke to about this project. And we're gonna show you a cool video with some neat music behind it to kind of wrap up what happened that day.
I want to reiterate one thing Lauren said, and that was that Richland One was amazing to work with. We worked with Tony and many others, and they just, we were very concerned that these meals did not go in a closet somewhere, that they went directly to families who could use them, churches. We had some people take boxes that day for various grassroots initiatives. And that to us was one of the most important things to do, and it took a village to make that happen. So I'm very grateful to many people, particularly Tony, for that.
Dr. Burke, Tamara, was that, was that Charlotte Berry in that?
Yes, it was.
Okay, you guys had, that's pretty incredible.
We had Charlotte Berry was there. We had a couple trustees. I mean, really, it was, if, when I stood up there and I made some formal remarks, it was very emotional in the sense that it felt like a true, for me, a true kind of family gathering cause there were all these eclectic people together that don't normally come together, but they're in different parts of my lives. And so it was really neat.
Looked like, and it looked like you, I mean, the work that you've done and that you've done with the college and in North Columbia, it's been really transformational. So, I should continue doing that work. We had a great meeting earlier with Joel Burke from Hunger Free America on utilizing the opposition as an early primary state to trying to elevate the discussion around hunger and solid policy proposals with the candidates running for president on both sides of the aisle. But, something they plan to have here maybe early next year, so we really wanna make sure that, Taylor, I'm not sure if he's in the room, but we'll loop you in in helping us kind of work on that. And Lauren, it's been awesome. You were beyond your years as a student.
Lauren also has her master's degree now.
It's been, it's been, it's been awesome watching you just grow into this dynamic young professional. So just keep on, keep on doing what you're doing. I mean, we're on a wonderful trajectory, so.
Thank you.
Absolutely. All right, thank y'all so much. I know I missed some of the, some of the presentation, but many of you know the statistics around hunger in America. And I wanna say the last, every debate we've had for President, including the fifty we had on both sides of the aisle in two thousand sixteen, I think of the, of the hundreds of questions, none of them focused on hunger in America and the issue of food insecurity, and how many working people are actually hungry every single day, and some solid policy proposals that we could advance to help address that. So, so thank you for the work you do. Thank you so much. Madam City Manager, and so how many J-School students from USC here today? Raise your hand. You guys look so excited to be here, by the way. I will say, I will say that. As young people and with the really little people so excited to be here, except for one student, and then you guys just are like, okay, all right, well, anywhere but here. When's the last day of classes? Friday? You guys, and exams start next week? Stoked? Straight A's? Straight A's, so we're glad.
Been a rough football season.
I wasn't gonna mention football, but so glad, so glad to have you here. So glad to have you here. Ma'am?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor and Council, the next three items make up Ordinance's second reading that are also part of a commercial development incentive program. Item twenty is Ordinance Number two thousand nineteen zero nine seven, consenting to the inclusion of property in a multi-county industrial business park, B six Bennett Horver LLC portions in Richland County.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, Mr. Rickaman.
We gotta, this isn't listed correctly.
Which one, Daniel?
Number twenty. Number twenty was presented and passed first as the P D Bull Street Apartments LLC, and this is not listed correctly. It's the tax map and everything matches, but the name is not what we did on the original agenda, or has been on any of the documents that have been passed through. So I didn't know if, what we needed to do to correct this, but it's not correct.
So I think, Mr. Rickman, I'll let Kay speak to it, this is probably the correct name now, and I may have mispronounced, so y'all help us out.
Okay, but that's not...
It may need to get a second read, give it first reading.
Yeah, we have to give this one first reading, cause it's not...
So it was a change in name requested by the developer. Everything else is the same.
It's a change in the name of ownership.
You gotta start it off.
But the owners are still the same.
The owners are all still the same, I guess they've just changed.
Our first reading was, yeah, first reading, I just had, cause I couldn't figure out what the entity was until I saw it. And I looked it up, and our reading the other day was P D P Bull Street Apartments LLC for the first reading. This is a different LLC name. I think we can give it first reading, and then give the second reading on the seventeenth. I don't know if we can do it.
Let's, let's, let's hold on twenty, let's move to twenty-one, and come back to twenty if that's, if that's right.
I don't know what to do legally otherwise.
Item twenty-one, Ordinance Number two thousand nineteen zero, I'm sorry, one zero seven, consenting to the inclusion of property in a multi-county industrial business park, UG Hospitality LLC.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion. With the previous question, clerk call the roll.
Mr. Rickaman.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell. Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Mr. Bedura.
No.
Mr. Davis.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin.
Aye.
Item 22, Ordinance Number 2019-093 consenting to the inclusion of property in a multi-county industrial business park, Ballpark LLC.
Second.
Mr. Rickman.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Mr. Bedura.
No.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin.
Item 23, Mayor Benjamin typically recused during these items on Wood Creek 23 and 24 due to his place of residence. Item 23, an annexation interim comprehensive plan map amendment, an interim zoning map amendment for 14--
Second.
Aye for District 4.
Mr. Rickman, Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Mr. Bedura.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Item 24, Annexation Interim Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment and Interim Zoning Map Amendment for 118 Wood Creek Ridge Drive.
District 4.
Do you mind if I get this one? So moved.
Pay attention.
Mr. Rickman.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell.
Aye.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Mr. Bedura.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Okay. Ordinance's first reading, carrying on. We'll get Mr. Mayor, Shanique, if you don't mind. Item 25, Ordinance Number 2019-103 granting an easement to South Carolina Electric and Gas Company, otherwise known as Dominion.
Second.
Mr. Rickman.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Mr. Bedura.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Item 26.
We told them.
Item 26, Ordinance Number 2019-104.
Second.
Move previous question, Clerk Colerole.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell.
Aye.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Mr. Bedura.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin.
Item 27, Annexation Interim Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment and Interim Zoning Map Amendment for 2.69 acres off Clemson Road.
The motion.
Move approval.
Second. What's that?
Daniel. Never mind.
District 4, you're in District 4. Moved and seconded, discussion. Seeing none, move the previous question, the Clerk Colerole.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell.
Aye.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Mr. Bedura.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin.
Aye.
Item 28, Annexation Interim Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment and Interim Zoning Map Amendment for 8550 Barrow Road.
District 1.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion. Seeing none, we'll move the previous question, the Clerk Colerole.
Mr. Rickman.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell.
Aye.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin, before we move into a period of resolutions, I'm assuming we've gotten ourselves together on 20.
First reading, move approval of first reading. Is there a second? Item 20, Ordinance 2019.
Second.
Do we, Mr. Mayor, just that, do we have confirmation that this is the same ownership group and everything? Because that name, that LLC name pops up multiple times, so.
My apologies, Counsel. We should have caught that first I'm hearing of it as well, but they, the staff has confirmed it is the same.
So, we're gonna give it first reading and then we're gonna get everything confirmed and corrected?
Yes, absolutely.
Yes, sir.
Yes. No, 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 we're taking first reading now, yeah. And want that confirmation articulated and written by their counsel as well, all right? With the previous question, Clerk Colerole.
Mr. Rickman.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell.
Aye.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Mr. Bedura.
No.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin.
Aye.
Moving into a period of resolutions, item 29, Resolution Number R. 2019-104 authorizing acceptance and dedication of that portion of a street known as Germany Street.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, move the previous question, Clerk Colerole.
Mr. Rickman.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell.
Aye.
Mr. Bedura.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin.
Aye.
Item 30, Resolution Number R. 2019-105 authorizing the City Manager to execute a maintenance and security agreement between Richland County and the City of Columbia or Gills Creek Section A Greenway.
So, we answered all questions there?
Move approval.
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm that we've identified the funding source?
Yes, sir.
Okay. It just wasn't listed. Normally, it says "fund" for what? Because I think they provided us the budget, but it didn't have where we were funding it from. The general fund money?
Yes, sir.
Is there a second?
Thank you.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, move the previous question, Clerk Colerole.
Mr. Rickman.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Bedura.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin.
Aye.
Other matters, item 31, Counsel is asked to approve a request for funding from Experience Columbia as requested by the Honorable Mayor Stephen K. Benjamin.
As I share with staff, just follow up to our last meeting, the, we made an obligation five years ago to fund the Watchtower event, respectively, for five years. This would be the third year that they had the event. The last two years, we were not obligated for, but this is an event that occurred. The annual contribution to Miss South Carolina Pageant is also here, $25,000. $50,000 Watchtower, $25,000 to Miss South Carolina. And again, the first time the NAACP hosted their convention here in 20 years, post-boycott, left us with a liability of $49,800. So, the motion is to appropriate surplus hospitality tax funding in those respective amounts, $50,000 for Watchtower, $25,000 for the Miss South Carolina Pageant 2019, and $49,800 for the NAACP Regional Convention hosted in April 2019, totaling $124,800. All approved items will, of course, require the submission of receipts and eligible expenditures prior to funding being distributed. That's a motion. So moved. Second by Mr. Davis. Move the previous question, Clerk Colerole.
Mr. Rickman.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell.
Aye.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Mr. Bedura.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin.
Aye.
Item 32, Counsel is asked to approve the proposed meeting schedule for 2020. Mayor Benjamin.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry, Mr. Duval.
Do you think we're really gonna have that July 7th meeting?
No, I don't, actually. And maybe not the July 21st either, but--
We gotta have one of them.
Yeah, you're right. I always forget that point. 7th, probably not.
And I don't think that staff should be here on Christmas Day getting the agenda ready for the January meeting.
Let them have a day off.
All right, so we're taking July 7th off and January 7th. Is that right? Now, do we have anything hot to trot on January 7th and is--
No, he's talking about the agenda deadline.
We'll change the deadline.
Okay, I got you. Okay.
So, Counsel is okay with January 7th?
Yeah.
All right, so striking July 7th. I've made it clear that I'm not gonna be here my birthday next year, so y'all can be here on December 1st, but I won't be here. But if y'all, if, my sense is we'll probably have a couple of items that might need two readings in December, so we can kind of consider that as a floating date and come back to it. But, so, motion to approve the, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, the original calendar proposed had a May 5th date. We just wanted to make sure Counsel noticed that change, May 12th and 19th.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Good. Motion to approve the 2020 council meeting dates as provided by the clerk, striking July 7th. Is there a second?
Second.
I think we probably did that twice, but move the previous question, Clerk Colerole.
Mr. Rickman.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Mr. Bedura.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin.
Aye.
Moving into a period of appointments, Ms. Jenkins will assist. We've got two Climate Protection Action Committee and the Design Development Review Commission.
Scott, why are you here?
Of all the places in the world, whatever.
All right.
So, we have Climate Protection Action Committee. We're actually holding it because we needed a, I think we were looking for District 1 representation, but we haven't received any additional names or applications, so we could wait if you all wanted to.
Mr. Mayor, Gretchen Lambert works in District 1, according to, she would make a great member. She's--
Gretchen Lambert?
Yeah, she's at Studio 2 LR.
That was not the name I intended to put forth tonight after talking with you.
Well, we're also writing recommendations for a few other boards that are in December.
We gotta put a bow on all these boards and commissions by the--
These are two bows for me tonight.
Yeah, you got someone for either one of those, or you wanna hold on to--
Yeah, the BPAC.
BPAC is December 17th, and yep, we do need recommendations for those as well.
Can't hear you.
BPAC will be on the December 17th agenda, and you have six appointments left, and we do need recommendations.
I was prepared to do it tonight, but I'll wait.
Okay, yes, sir. And I can actually get those names from you after.
Okay.
And--
DDRC is up next, and that was another one of the ones we need recommendations for.
What we waiting on DDRC?
So, we have a person we can appoint as the planner, but we need a District 2 representative to replace someone that resigned.
I thought we moved forward, we didn't move forward with Jeans, with Dinkins last time on DDRC? Did we hold on that one?
Yeah, you didn't make up your mind.
I thought that y'all were still holding--
That's all right, we may have held on both of them.
It says held, so.
Okay. We're gonna hold on your District 2, Ed, but I'll move the nomination of Sanford Dinkins as a planner on DDRC.
I'm sorry, I kind of mixed it up a little bit. Do you want to go out and do something with CPAC right now?
Yeah, I had--
And then for DDRC, what do you want to do? You want to choose Sanford Dinkins?
Set. Which one's it?
CPAC. Sorry, I started mentioning all of them at once.
All right, on the agenda tonight, y'all, we have CPAC and we have DDRC.
Yes, sir.
He wants to hold his District 2 appointee for DDRC.
Okay.
I've moved the nomination of Mr. Dinkins for DDRC.
Sanford Dinkins.
Okay, got it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? With the previous question, Clerk Colerole.
Mr. Rickman.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell.
We're gonna hold on District 2, Ed.
And then for CPAC, holding.
Let's finish voting on this one first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Mr. Bedura.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin.
Aye. All right, on CPAC, do we have any nominees for CPAC right now? You do, Sam?
Gretchen Lambert.
CPAC or BPAC? CPAC.
CPAC.
Okay.
It's supposed to be District 2. She works in District 1, Studio 2 LR.
I know, but I had committed last week--
It's District 1 for CPAC.
Two names.
So, one of the questions you all had last time is if you could have additional appointees.
And Mary Pat emailed saying additional appointees can be made by the council members. You can appoint more than one. It says, "According to the bylaws, should the mayor or the city council member want to appoint more than one member? They may do so, but they must also designate one as a voting appointee."
Okay. A second nomination, Gretchen Lambert.
I'll do Gretchen Lambert and Marty White, CPAC.
Second, second, second that motion. Move the names of Ms. Lambert and Mr. White?
Gretchen Lambert.
All right, all right. We moved and seconded both of the nominations. Any discussion? Move the previous question, Clerk Colerole.
Mr. Rickman.
You have application.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Mr. Bedura.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin.
Aye. All right, so we still have BPAC and the Parks and Rec and District 2 slot on DDRC for the 17th. Let's make sure all applications are in Ms. Jenkins ASAP.
We just did DDRC, Dinkin.
We just have one slot left.
Thank you all. Mr. Mayor, there are no matters for you to consider from the work session.
What do we have? Do we have any items?
You don't have any.
We do not, okay? Are there any items that need to be reported from Council Committee or referred to Council Committee? All right.
I'll move to adjourn.
Madam Clerk, do we have anyone sign up to speak?
All right.
Non-debatable motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Move the previous question, Clerk Colerole.
Mr. Rickman, Mr. McDowell, Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Mr. Bedura.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin.
Aye.